It's a long walk. I gotta go back to my office. My iPad's not working. So I had to get it in pain. Uh, might be able to do that. I'll look and see. Did you get it? Did you get it?
It acts like it's loaded. Cause it won't reload.
Right.
Won't sync anymore. Does that say that overdrive?
Right. I don't know.
He's in there now.
I got it. He's good now.
Don't eat that up there.
Is that what you usually do, just go to the website and get it? I have tried that. I'm ready. If you're waiting for me, you're backing up. Hey, Linwood. How you doing?
Good evening, everyone. Call the meeting of the Franklin City Council to order. Just as a reminder, please turn off your cell phones or place them in vibrate mode. On behalf of Ward Six, Councilwoman Hilliard will give us an invocation.
Let us pray. Most holy and always goddess again that we come Lord God. We thank you for this beautiful day, this beautiful city. And we thank you for all that you've done for us and all that you plan to do, dear God. And Father God, as we attempt to carry out the business of this great city, I ask that you would lead us and guide us and that we may make the right decisions for your people, dear God. I ask that you would bless your people and bless Councilman Glad, dear God. We ask these blessings in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank you for that. We will move right into introduction of new employees. Community development is first. Donald Goodwin.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Martin, Mr. Taylor. It's my pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Doug Edwards. He is our newest employee with Department of Community Development. He is our new building inspector and code enforcement officer. The replacement of Mr. Bob Atkins that just recently retired. Doug is married to his wife Cindy. They have three beautiful children, three daughters. So we know who runs the roof, rules the roofs there. So he's worked, uh, comes to us from Union Camp Corporation IP. Thirty-one years there. Past three years, he's been with the Isle of Wight County School Board in their maintenance division. He has his master's electrical license, master electrician. He's also a volunteer with the Hunterdale File Department. And he's a firefighter and EMT. When he's not working, he enjoys going to the beach with his family. And you might find him on the Notaway River in his pontoon boat fishing. Anyway, do you want me to welcome Mr. Edwards?
Welcome, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you.
Mr. Pace, Public Works.
He's got half the room.
I think this is my first time addressing you as mayor and it's a pleasure.
No, it isn't, but thank you anyway.
It's a pleasure. A little unusual tonight, I actually, on your agenda, you'll see five employees that I'm supposed to be introducing to you tonight. I knew that there were a couple at the last minute this evening that had things that came up, couldn't make it. But it seemed we've had a couple of others that weren't able to make it also. If I may, if it would please the council, I'd like to go ahead and give you their names and just tell you a little bit about them. I want to start off with our two newest members, they're not present tonight, two newest members in our refuse division. Richard Yurton came to us on May the third as an SW two, which is sanitation worker two. He resides in Southampton County. And he, he's not married, doesn't have any children, but his interests include gardening, video games, camping, and kayaking. The second member in the refuse division came to us on April the nineteenth of 2013, Mr. Larry Artis. Larry also was hired as an SW two. He resides in Gates, North Carolina. He has two children, they're both grown Larry and Chris. And he enjoys drag racing, any type of motorsports, and playing pool. Also not present tonight in the street division, our new sweeper operator is Mr. Glenn Story. Glenn began on January the second of 2012. He's been with us a right good little while. He lives in Carsville, lives in Isle of Wight County. He is, has three daughters and they are all grown, he didn't give me names on those. Glenn is also an avid motorsports fan and he participates weekly during the season in sprint car racing down in Margaritaville and in South Hill. Next member, employee I'd like to speak to you about, he is not present either, is Cornell Evans. Cornell Evans worked with us for about four years previously as a seasonal grass cutter. We're really pleased to get him back full-time. Cornell, he is with the right of ways and grounds maintenance division. And he lives in Southampton County. He's single and he's got a whole lot of things here, hobbies that he enjoys. He loves all kinds of sports, football, baseball. He just finished and got his degree in AutoCAD, four years of college in that, and got his degree in that. He enjoys spending time with his family, bowling, likes to go out and eat, and enjoys hunting and fishing. At our wastewater treatment plant recently, we had a, we had an employee at the wastewater treatment plant that was promoted to a supervisor and came up to Public Works. And so that left an opening down there. And we had an individual who had been with us about four or five years ago, came back, Mr. Gerald Griffin. Gerald is a operator two, licensed operator two, so we were really lucky to get him back. Gerald resides in Southampton County. He is married to his wife Carol, they don't have any children. His hobbies and interests include hunting and fishing, trapping, and permaculture. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of permaculture, but very interesting, very interesting thing. Now tonight, the only new employee that made it tonight is Mr. Ronald Hensley. We kinda got Ronald from the City of Virginia Beach, we're very fortunate to have him. He comes to the street division as a motor equipment operator two. Very skilled in operating dump trucks, excavators, backhoes, and just about anything we have is motorized. Ronald resides in Newsome's. He's a single, parents, single dad. He has three kids, he has a son named Bryce. He has another boy, son named Cody, and he has a daughter named Alisa. He enjoys playing sports, watching sports. And one of his biggest hobbies and passions is taking care of his three kids. Very lucky to have Ronald, he's done a real good job so far at this point. And with that, we'd like for y'all to welcome Ronald and these other employees of the City of Franklin. Thank you.
Welcome. Mr. Pace, if you find that you can bring the others back at another time, we'll be happy to have them introduced to us.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. And now we will move to Citizens Time, Mr. Herman Parker.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to start off with, I've got my paperwork, it was a hundred and sixty-two pages. That we weren't told that they were, we were supposed to pay for this. And we get a fifty-seven dollar bill from this, whereas we weren't told, so we don't owe. Don't try to not, but anyway, we were told that that's definite, we got to pay that. Why is that? When we got it, it was a lot of stuff covered up, I understand that. Because that was explained to me. But what I don't understand was there was more than what should have been covered up, covered up on that piece of paper. And that's not right. Another thing, Ms. Mayor, is that I saw your ad in the paper, it was touching. But it would be a lot better if it was a lot of truth to it.
That's personal? Please move on. Please move on.
I'll move forward, I just say you need to help the people more. I've got a paper in my back pocket that's, go to everybody else, but your name's not on it. And that's not fair to the people. My other issue is, moving along, two ye, three years ago, we foreclosed on a house. On eight oh five Chestnut Street. Well, we're still getting taxes from that bill after we even bankrupted. Is this some way because the light bill's been called up? That they're trying to tax us for stuff we don't owe? I mean, people are seeing through this. Six thousand dollar light bills. Come on, I mean, there's something that we got to do to survive. There's no jobs out there for none of us. And it's, it's all we're doing is paying the city something they don't even deserve. They're sitting up there, all these new faces. And I'll close this in, I hope none of the seats are gonna stay long, too long, nobody gets too comfortable.
Thank you. Mr. Herbert Hunter.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Martin, Mr. Williams, and to all City Council members, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Herbert Hunter, four oh eight Cobb Street. I just was concerned about Thursday, eight twenty, I mean nine twenty. The sweeper goes along my street. This is trash day for us, Thursday. I don't understand why the sweeper go first and then the trash trucks come later. That was my concern. And I thought maybe we need a little attention. I think it's just in reverse.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, and the city manager will contact you with a response to that. That completes Citizens Time. We have spent a whole lot of time on the electric issue. The city manager has dedicated an overwhelming amount of time researching the concerns that were presented during council meeting at Citizens Time. The manager and council together have developed ways to help our customers control their electric consumption. The manager has to return to his normal duties of operating the city. If there continues to be requests, they are to be forwarded to the appropriate staff person. It is imperative that the city manager and council focus on moving the city in the right direction. We have to get businesses and jobs. We will continue to work on what we've obligated to do. And that's the third-party review of our equipment and a flyer that has tips for customers to control usage. And now we will move on to amendments to the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Do you have an amendment?
Yes, I'd like to amend the, I'd like to amend the agenda to discuss some of those methods of reducing the utility bills on the citizens. Because to my knowledge, we haven't had any discussion in regards to reduction of methods that we can try as a council.
Is there a second? Is there a second to Mr. Mclemore's motion? If not, it dies for lack of second. We will now move on to the consent agenda. And under the consent agenda are city council minutes from the April eighth meeting, which were tabled, and April twenty-second regular meeting. I'm trying to get to it. Are there any corrections to first the April eighth minutes? Are there any corrections? Are there any corrections to the April twenty-second?
Madam Mayor, I move for adoption of the April eighth and April twenty-second meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to adopt the minutes for April eighth and April twenty-second. Are there any questions, discussion?
Yes, Ms. Mayor, um, I'm having some difficulty with my iPad. Could you point out what page the amendment was addressed? That I brought to the attention of council last time regarding my comments?
Regarding your comments?
We tabled the minutes last time because we wanted to review the tape to add what was accurate in regard to the discussion.
So you're asking that that section be read?
Page seven. Madam Mayor, it's page seven of the April the eighth minutes. It's actually page ten of the agenda packet.
Okay, Mr. Burgess, it seems like you have a...
It's the section after citizen five during that discussion.
Okay.
Bottom of page seven on to eight.
Have you read that section, Mr. Mclemore?
Yes. Thank you.
It's been moved and properly second.
Madam Mayor, who seconded it, I didn't hear. No, thank you.
To adopt the minutes, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, opposed, it's have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye. Next would be resolution approving the Southampton IDA refinance of the Village of Woods Edge.
Move to accept a resolution for the Village of Woods Edge IDA.
Is there a second? It's been moved and properly second. I'm gonna ask Vice Mayor to read the resolution for benefit of the public, please.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Franklin, Virginia. Whereas the City Council for the City of Franklin, Virginia, the council, has previously approved the issuance by the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Franklin, Virginia, the Franklin Authority, of its revenue bond in an amount not to exceed three million dollars, the Franklin Bond, to finance capital improvements at a facility for the residents and care of the elderly located at fourteen oh one North High Street in the City of Franklin, Virginia, and owned and operated by the Village of Woods Edge, the corporation. Whereas contemporaneously with the issuance of the Franklin Bond, the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Southampton, Virginia, the Southampton Authority, has agreed to issue its revenue bond, the Southampton Bond pursuant to the Industrial Development and Revenue Bond Act, Chapter forty-nine, Title fifteen point two, Code of Virginia of nineteen fifty, as amended, the act, in an amount not to exceed four million nine hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. Whereas the proceeds of the Southampton Bond will be used to, A, refund bonds previously issued by the Franklin Authority for the benefit of the corporation and pay cost of issuing both Southampton Bond and the Franklin Bond. Whereas Section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code of nineteen eighty-six as amended, it requires that the government unit having jurisdiction over the area in which any facility financed with the proceeds of bonds is located approve the issuance of such bonds. Whereas the corporation has requested the city council to approve the issuance of the Southampton Bond to comply with Sections fifteen point two dash four nine zero six of the act and Section one forty-seven F of the code and to concur with Southampton Resolution as defined below. And whereas, a copy of the Southampton Authority's Inducement Resolution of March seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen, approving the issuance of the Southampton Bond, the Southampton Resolution, has been filed with the city council. Therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Franklin, Virginia. One, the city council hereby approves the issuance of the Southampton Bond by the Southampton Authority for the benefit of the corporation as required by Section one forty-seven F of the code and Section fifteen point two dash four nine zero six of the act and concurs with Southampton Resolution to the extent required by Section fifteen point two dash forty-nine oh five of the act. The approval of the issuance of the Southampton Bond does not constitute an endorsement of the Southampton Bond on the creditworthiness of the corporation. The City of Franklin has no obligation to pay the Southampton Bond or the interest thereon or other costs incident thereto. Three, all acts and doings of the officers and members of the city council that are in conformity with the purpose and intent of this resolution shall be and the same hereby are, in all respects, approved and confirmed. Four, the resolution shall take effect immediately upon its adoption. And it will be signed by the clerk of the City Council of the City of Franklin, Virginia.
Thank you. It's been moved properly second and read. Are there any questions to, on this resolution for the IDA refinance of the Village of Woods Edge? If not, please signify by saying aye, nays have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye. And now we will go back to, I mean, go to Resolution in Observation of Emergency Medical Services Week. Medical services, it was a misprint on our agenda. Anyone have any comment on the?
Would you need a motion first to accept?
Sure, if that's what you wanna do.
Move to accept the EMS Week proclamation for the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth of two thousand and thirteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
I guess we need to share the reading of, Mr. Burgess, would you do us the honor of reading the Observation of Emergency Medical Services Week Resolution?
EMS Week proclamation to designate the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Ray Steen Johnson Ashburn Mayor of the City of Franklin, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and thirteen, as Emergency Medical Services Week. With, with the theme EMS, one mission, one team, I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
It's been moved properly second and read to approve the Resolution in Observation of Emer- Emergency Medical Services Week. Any questions? If not, please, all in favor, say aye, and nays have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye. And now may I have a motion to adopt the Resolution in Observation of Building Safety Month? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to adopt the Resolution in Observation of Building Safety Month. Whereas, our city's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and resilience in the built environment that affect our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, our confidence is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians, building safety, and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians, dedicated members of the International Code Council, use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas, the international codes, the most widely adopted building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation are used by most US cities, counties, and states. These modern building codes are, also include safeguards to protect the public from natu- natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of public safety. Our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable Our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings, and whereas, Building Safety Month code officials keep you safe. The theme for Building Safety Month, two thousand and thirteen, encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety. Green and resilient buildings, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, backyard safety, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month, two thousand and thirteen, encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and rec- and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due, due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas, each year in a observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by the local and state building departments and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Ray Steen D. Lisa Johnson Ashburn, Mayor of the City of Franklin, do hereby proclaim the month of May, two thousand and thirteen, as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participating in Building Safety Month. Are there any questions? The resolution has been moved properly second and read. Hearing none, please signify by saying aye. The nays have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye. And now we have a public hearing, and the purpose of the public hearing is to receive school board nominations for Ward Two and Five. We will now open the public hearing portion unless our attorney has some direction for us. We will now open the public hearing to receive nominations for Ward Two. First, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
City Council, Mr. Martin, Mr. Williams. My name is Terry Godwin, and I live at nine oh one Place Street, and I'm here tonight to nominate Nancy Godwin for the Ward Two School Board seat. Tell you a little bit about Nancy. She's a resident of Franklin for the past thirteen years. Since her children have been in the city's school systems, she has participated in the school extensively on many levels. She's been a member of the SP, SP Morton PTA for the past eight years, two of those years as a board member, and two of those years as PTA president. She has served five years on the SP Morton No Child Left Behind School Improvement Committee as a parent representative. This committee assisted the school on how to achieve the requirements of the No Child Left Behind law. Nancy currently participates at J.P. King in their Parents as Partners Program. This is a program that serves to get more parental involvement into the schools. With a son involved with athletics at the high school, she is now an active member of the Franklin High School Athletic Booster Club, and will serve as the treasurer next year. She's been a substitute teacher at SP Morton and J.P. King for the past, excuse me, eight years, and has learned a lot about the schools in that function. She's a graduate of the University of Georgia with degrees in agricultural science. Although she has worked closely with the schools for almost a decade in many different capacities, her biggest reason for wanting to be a school board member are her two sons, Ryan and Jack. Ryan is a freshman at the high school this year, and Jack is a sixth grader at the middle school. So I'm nominating Nancy Godwin for the Ward Two School Board seat.
Thank you. Do you have that in print?
I do.
You could give a copy to the attorney, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other nominations for Ward Two? Please come forward. Nominations for Ward Two, please come forward. Nominations for Ward Two, please come forward. We'd like to close that part of the public hearing for Ward Two. Appropriate, Mr. Attorney? We'd like to now open the nominations for Ward Five.
Good afternoon.
Good evening.
Mayor Johnson Ashburn, other council members, Mr. Williams, Mr. Martin. My name is Verda Jackson, and I live at six oh three Chestnut Street, and I'm here today to nominate for Ward Five, Janet Austin. She's a resident of Franklin, Virginia, at fifteen oh four Virginia Street. She's, uh, employed with J.C. Penney's in Chesapeake since two thousand and nine. She's a graduate of Franklin High School, and she has additional education with Smithdale Massey Business School in Richmond with an associate degree, and a member of Calvary Baptist Church, Calvary Revival Church, rather, in Norfolk. And I recommend her as a school board member, and I'm sure she'll do a wonderful job, and as I'm going out, uh, she's my nominee. Thank you.
Thank you. Other nominations for Ward Five, please come forward. Are there other nominations for Ward Five? Are there other nominations for Ward Five? Hearing none, we will close the nomination. And also the public hearing for Ward Two and Five. Mr. Attorney. It is time for council discussion. Question. For interviews. It is council's decision to make the interview process, um, still available even if it's one nominee?
Yes, ma'am, you have that option.
Council needs to decide whether to have interviews, um, or not. In the past, it's been, we have not, but that doesn't mean this time we cannot have the interviews. I think we may need to, uh, just to get to know our nominees, but that's entirely up to council. I'd like to hear my colleagues.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Yes, I would like for us to, um, do interviews, just to have some discussion with the each nominee as to, you know, where they stand, you know, some knowledge about, you know, the process of being on the school board, just some different things, and as you said, to get to know them a little bit.
Madam Mayor, I think we should have the interviews. Um, we've made an asserted effort this year to work closely with the school board, and I think by getting to know them through the interview process would make it much easier for us to work together.
Anyone else?
I have a problem with the interview is just that to get to know the individuals that are nominated, um, uh, learn more about them, but Australia's questionnaire, I don't, I'm not careful.
I concur. I think we should interview and get to know them and make sure that they're the right fit, and that we start off on the right foot as we go forward and working with them into their term may be great.
So with that being said, Mr. McLemore?
I concur.
With that being said, Mr. Manager, uh, would you email council with three dates, not unless you have your calendars with you? Oh, do you? Okay. Let's get three, let's get, settle on a date, and then we will make contact with our two nominees. Is next week available, the twenty-second, twenty-third?
Twenty-second is one of my suggested work sessions.
Oh, okay.
How about the twentieth on Monday?
The twentieth?
Twentieth is good for me.
Is it good for you, Ms. Murphy?
Not really, but what's your time?
In the evening.
Evening, but what's the time? About what time?
'Cause you get in late on Monday.
Just give me a time.
Six thirty?
Good.
Six thirty?
Six thirty's fine.
All right, Mr. Manager, if you would.
Two candidates here.
I'm gonna have them stand, but if you would get them, um, letters to that effect, please. Our two candidates are here with us, and we would ask Ward Two, Mrs. Good Godwin, would you please stand? Thank you. Thank you. And our Ward Five nominee? Ms. Austin, thank you.
Do either of them have a conflict, Mayor? You might wanna ask them if it's Monday.
Well, I'm not sure that that's appropriate on camera.
I mean, if they have a conflict on Monday, is the date of the twenty?
I, I trust that Monday is sufficient.
Okay.
With you all. Next, we will move on to financial budget amendments. Ms. Rollins?
Good evening, Mayor Ashburn, Vice Mayor Chedum, council members, Mr. Martin and Mr. Williams. We have two amendments for your consideration this evening. The First Amendment is a donation received for the Fire and Rescue Department in amount of one thousand dollars, and the Second Amendment is for the General Fund for a donation received in amount of one hundred dollars for the Police Department.
Madam Mayor, move for adoption of two thousand and thirteen dash twenty-two.
Just a minute, please. It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly second to adopt Budget Amendment to twelve dash thirteen. Are there any questions? Hearing none, please signify by saying aye. Nays have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye. We've come to old and new business, city managers report. Mr. Martin?
Uh, the first item is the Community Development Block Grant, Planning Grant. This is an ongoing saga where the city has received some funds and to try to target in earmarking areas for rehabilitation of needy homes, where the owners would be interested in this participating. Uh, I'll now recognize Donald Goodwin, who will give us the particulars on the latest receipt of funds for this ongoing project.
Uh, as you recall, we, uh, recently just completed a neighborhood, uh, needs assessment, and from that needs assessment, we arrived at a neighborhood with, uh, through the management team of the most, that, um, deserving of the most needs, and what this next grant would do will allow us to concentrate on a specific area within the number-one, uh, area of the needs assessment to hopefully, um, get another planning grant of thirty thousand dollars. We have six tasks to, to complete by the middle of June. We have to have a public meeting with the neighborhood, uh, folks to educate them about what the process and what the purpose of the grant is, and to do, uh, neighborhood surveys to determine income, uh, eligibility, um, to, to find out if we have enough of the LMI, uh, component to do a project. We have to have a, uh, management, two management team meetings and submit all this information to, to DHCD by June fourteenth. We do have some funding to, to do the upfront task, uh, approximately three thousand dollars to get that done, and once we do that, we will have a facilitated meeting with DHCD here to find out if we have a feasible project, and if so, then they will, we will have a contract for the remaining twenty-seven thousand to finish a more in-depth study of that neighborhood. And, um, it's the Madison Street area, uh, of the city, and the Cobb, uh, Banks and Cobb Town neighborhood of the city. So we would take a confined area and look at that and, and see what we can, um, come up with as far as a community improvement grant, to do some housing rehabilitation and some infrastructure rehabilitation, water and sewer, street, sidewalks.
Are there any acquisitions or demolish- demolitions involved?
We haven't got to that point, that I don't think there would be any acquisitions from what we, based on the needs assessment that we did and the housing conditions. Um, there are some that could be beyond, maybe, could be, um, substantial reconstruction, could be taken down or be built back, but not any acquisitions and demolition or relocation.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, um, at the last meeting, I thought you only had two of them of this committee, and I thought that they had chosen an area on Pretlow as being the primary area, off of Pretlow, so when did it switch to Cobb Town? No, this is, this is what the committee unanimously endorsed, was the Madison Street area. It was a sub-area of the larger Cobb Town area.
That, yeah, that, yes, that's correct. That was one of the areas, then we came up with three, the top three, and then it was at our last plan, our last management team meeting, or there was a couple team meetings that we narrowed it down to one neighborhood, which ended up to be Banks and Cobb. And then within that neighborhood, we, we, we had selected, I would say, six or seven smaller areas within Banks and Cobb, and it was unanimously voted on by the management team that the area, uh, Wilson Streets and the two neighboring streets in that, in that area was a good candidate for a project. So, uh, so we did do that.
Because, uh, the meeting that I was at when we voted, we had selected Pretlow, but I guess at a subsequent meeting it changed that. And, um, the other concern I had is it states on the agenda Madison Street, and I'm wondering, have you evaluated whether, um, manufactured homes would qualify for this before you expend funds on studying Madison Street?
We, we did get an answer from DHCD on that, and I shared that with the management team just a couple weeks ago. Um, I'd be glad to forward that to you, um, what the answers were, and they would be eligible for rehabilitation.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Martin?
Okay. If I could go out of order, I, I do have the proposed budget presentation to make, but I would like to go ahead and recognize, uh, something that, uh, is before you. There's a letter that's been drafted for the mayor's signature, and members of council uh, may want to endorse this, uh, celebrating the hundredth anniversary of one of our local Boy Scout troops, and I would suggest that for the public's awareness, uh, since this is a significant event, you may wanna have it read, Mayor, and endorsed by the council before we...
Yes, our Vice Mayor has planned to read it.
I almost felt like I was only alive in the Boy Scouts, and maybe I should defer to my Eagle Scout.
You're good, go ahead.
Uh, "To the Boy Scouts of America, Troop Seventeen, established nineteen..." Uh, "To the Boy Scouts of America, Troop Seventeen, established nineteen thirteen, chartered by High Street United Methodist Church, Franklin, Virginia. On behalf of the City of Franklin and all the members of Franklin City Council, I offer heartfelt congratulations and sincere best wishes on the occasion of your distinguished organization's upcoming centennial celebration. Having been chartered by the High Street United Methodist Church in nineteen thirteen, Boy Scouts of America, Troop Seventeen, has served this community admirably for a hundred years. Achieving this milestone would not have been possible without tremendous stability and the capable leadership and dedicated participation of both the youth members and adult scout masters throughout this period. It is truly an honor and my distinct pleasure to salute your organization upon the conclusion of BSA Troop Seventeen's first century of service to this community and wish you Godspeed as you embark on a second century of continuing the traditions that have sustained this fine organization. Boy Scouts of America has withstood the test of time and Troop Seventeen has brought honor to BSA and most certainly made a difference in Franklin, Virginia during the troop's one hundred years of existence. With warmest personal regards, signed Mayor Raystein Johnson Ashburn."
May I please have a motion that endorse, the city council endorses this letter and becomes an official part of our record?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, the council endorses the letter going to Boy Scouts of America, Troop Seventeen. Any questions?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. As a, as my fellow city councilman pointed out, as an Eagle Scout, it's a great organization and for an organization to last a hundred years says something for the youth and for the adults that lead the troop. They do a great job and I'd like to just pass on my warm wishes to them. Great job.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, they're not the only Boy Scouts. Uh, before coming to Virginia, I was very active in the Boy Scouts of New York and was actually the youngest qualified scout master in the state of New York. So I support the organization and I wish it much continued success.
Anyone else, questions or comments?
Likewise, I have two nephews that are member of the Scouts today, and they are very proud of it and this same formalization. God bless.
My thoughts are the same as council, the rest of the council.
All right.
I don't think much else could be said. The Boy Scouts teach young men how to be good young men. Helps everything.
With no other comments or questions, please signify by saying aye. Nays have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye.
Just for the record, Mayor, the event is scheduled, as I understand it, I'm sure there'll be more details in the media, but on June the eighth, on Saturday, there's an event scheduled to commemorate this event and hopefully one of the member, either the mayor or a member of council be able to attend and present the, uh, the letter that'll be framed.
Thank you. Continue on, please.
Next item is something I know all of you have eagerly waited for. We gave an overview at the last meeting and, and want to present a more detailed version tonight. I will not read the entire budget message. I got chastised for that last year, so I won't do that again this year. It is quite thick, the whole book, pretty, pretty intimidating document, almost two hundred pages. Tremendous amount of work went into it by members of council and the staff. This, this process started, as the budget calendar we'll show in just a few moments, started last August. Right after we adopted the last budget, we began the process of developing goals and, and draft goals by department. And then council had several work sessions independently and with staff. And you also had work sessions with other agencies to try to build a, a plan for going forward. I won't go through the cover sheet here, it just gives you some of the highlights of the things that are involved. I will mention one that's most noteworthy and gold at the top. No proposal, no proposed increases in property tax rates or any other taxes, for that matter, are, are recommended in this budget. It does level fund most community agencies, and you'll see the exceptions noted as you review it. It does implement the VRS, the Retirement System Legislation that requires that we continue to contribute to the retirement system for employees and employees' salaries. They'll be sharing in that burden going forward. This is the second year of that, with the goal, eventually we will be at five percent over the next three years after the coming year. It does include, and I'm very pleased to recommend this, a two percent cost of living adjustment for city employees. And you have information in documenting how minimal we've had in terms of increases over the last several years, but I'm pleased that I was able to recommend that. Of course, it is subject to the city council's approval before any of this becomes approved or enforced. It does use debt service reserve funds, as we went over at the last meeting. However, I'm pleased to report that it's a reduced amount. I was able to reduce the amount of reserve funds utilized to balance the budget. The good news there is that'll leave more funds available for future budget years to ride the wave of any additional hardships or difficulties we have in meeting our, our budget requirement. In terms of personnel, there are a number of personnel changes. It does carry forward the emergency services positions that were funded with the SAFER grant this past year, the federal grant, and those that were locally funded. There are few other personnel changes, but no new positions except in the Community Development Department and Planning, where we are being mandated to enforce more stringent stormwater regulations beginning in the next fiscal year. Now that we, it also contains a recommendation that we merge the department with Southampton County's Department for inspection purposes and enforcement of these stormwater rules and other areas. That will, if you approve the budget, that would become effective July one, and it would authorize the additional personnel, two additional personnel to make that happen. There are also some other personnel changes that we'll walk through as we go through the presentation. The last item, of course, is there are some local revenue enhancements, but those are through in terms of General Fund, which is all I'm referring to at this point, which is the primary, the bulk, or the largest fund that the city has and does most of our governmental operations. I'll review the enterprise funds after the General Fund. But there are some revenue enhancements. Some of those are a result of improving economic conditions, but we are very cautious and very conservative in utilizing those because we don't want to back ourselves into a situation that occurred in past years where the city had projections that resulted in revenues, they were too aggressive and revenues ended up being short, and that cut into the reserve funds. It also includes improving situation with the Isle of Wight Revenue Sharing Funds, significantly improved over the prior year. It's recommended, or expected that we'll get $530,000 in funds from Isle of Wight that is still less than half of what the city was receiving before International Paper closed the plant. But that's significant progress in the years since the closing of repurposing and other activities at the plant or starting to build back some of those revenues. The second slide that I'd like to show is, this one you saw the last meeting showing you where we were when we started this process some months ago. With the departmental request and the agency requests and all the other things necessary to build a budget, we were looking at about a million and a half dollar shortfall in the General Fund, which is in excess of $20 million of, of our over $50 million budget that I'll go over in a moment. This is what was presented on April twenty-second. You also were told on April twenty-second that if we applied, the revenue sharing money is anticipated. I just mentioned 530,000, and this is on Slide Three. The scheduled use of our debt reserves, that we did a multi-year plan last year, the council endorsed that, would have called for us to receive 872,000 and change out of that debt reserve. And you see what that total comes to. Then we made some adjustments and some presumptions with changes to different items that reduced, that came up with about 319,200 in reductions to requests. And this was all presented again on the twenty-second. Going to Slide Four, you see how the exercise began. We refer to the same numbers, we, the new revenues that were projected, and then the adjustments. And that left us with a favorable balance of funds over expenditures of $169,743 as of April twenty-second. Unfortunately, left out of the budget at that juncture were a number of the initiatives that were very important to consider for funding. I mentioned those on Slide Five at the last meeting. At that time, that did not include a provision for salary increase. It, I had the strong desire, Finance Director and I, that we look at bumping our contingency appropriation for unexpected emergencies up a bit. It also, we had a strong desire to lower the debt serve appropriate, uh, debt service appropriation from reserve as much as possible. After the twenty-second, you see where we stood on Slide Six. We had $169,743 available, the desires that I just pointed out to make adjustments. So we revisited the cuts that were potentially there. Added in the two percent salary adjustment, you see the amount of funds that that cost. We also, in reviewing the school systems budget, determined and I'll speak a little more detail about this in the school systems budget in the latter part of this report, but we reduced the, their budget request by the amount shown of 142,000 based on that, including the amount of the prior year carryover above the base budget appropriation. So that was taken out. We also lowered the use of the debt reserves by 186,000. We netted out some other miscellaneous deductions, coupled with a few slight adjustments upward. And the total net adjustments came down to 169,743, which matched on pay, on number eight, item eight. You see that that brings the budget to zero out of balance. It's now in balance. As Budget Officer, I'm required to present a balanced budget. You see the note that this reflected the significant number of expenditures and reductions in spending as well as some increases that were required to be met. Tonight, I'm presenting you a balanced budget that totals, for General Fund only, totals 21,648,279 dollars, where revenues balanced with expenditures. I'd like to now give you some highlights of each of the funds in the budget. First of all, I'll start out with a summary total of all funds. The city's proposed budget for FY two thousand thirteen dash two thousand fourteen is in the third column from the left, and you see by fund, it totals 54,290,659 dollars. By anyone's standards, a lot of money. And you see the breakdown by fund. You also see the current year budget in the first column as it was adopted last July, or last June for beginning July one, two thousand twelve, through June thirty of, of next month of two thousand thirteen. You see that our total budget for the prior year was 52,680,810 dollars. But I point out quickly that our budget had to be amended during the year in a number of ways of significance in this, with some personnel changes when we received a SAFER grant. And we're able to add additional emergency medical staff and some other budgetary changes during the year. Increased the General Fund budget in particular. You see how other funds change, but our total for the amended budget of the current fiscal year as of today is 54,755,594. If you compare the amended budget to the proposed budget, and I would argue that that's more apples to apples because both contain those additional personnel I referenced, it's, it's a point eight-five percent, slightly less than one percent reduction over the prior year consolidated budget. That's 464,935 dollars less than the amended two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget. Moving ahead, just to hit some highlights of what the budget, how we developed the budget. As I noted earlier, the council had work sessions. We developed some priorities out of those work sessions and some consensus of the council on the direction you want to see some of the priorities of the city go. Talk about that a little later. It's referenced quite significantly in your budget proposal with proposed goals for the city. I've reprinted the mission statement the council adopted sometime in the past. I'm not sure exactly how many years ago, but that mission statement is still on the books until this council modifies it. Included with that is about thirty-two, I believe it was, bulleted goals and priorities that I hope during this budget process, the city council will scrutinize carefully and adopt and let that be added to the mission statement as the objectives and goals for the coming fiscal year. Next, we did provide for expenditure reductions, trying to keep in tact operations and the service levels that we had. We did do some minor tweaking of services, particularly the solid waste services and some other areas to try to make them more efficient. It does include and reflect operational achievements, and those are listed in your budget message as highlights and accomplishments. I won't review those now. It conveys the financial policy compliance. This was something I'm very pleased to report last year, when we presented the budget with our projected end-of-year reserves that was borne out by the audit that was presented to you earlier this calendar year. For the end of June two thousand twelve, the city was below its General Fund fund balance requirement by policy that the council adopted some years ago. I'm pleased to report that our projections right now, and that's all they are is projections, but we feel very comfortable that we should be very close, shows that we will slightly exceed that budgetary General Fund policy requirement for over fifteen percent, or at least fifteen percent in reserves in the General Fund. That's a significant accomplishment. I credit the council's diligence in adopting a budget that was designed to build that reserve while also getting us back in compliance with policy and meet the needs of the city. And finally, to set a, a tax rate that could be sustained for multiple years into the future. And that's part of the reason that we're able to recommend no change in the tax rate, excuse me, this year. It does support continued investment in our schools. Franklin's city schools, based on per capita spending on education locally, is ranked tenth highest among Virginia cities based on the latest documentation we've received. That's, that's good, and I believe it's correct that all nine of the cities ahead of us have a higher tax rate than Franklin, that are ahead of us on that tenth, tenth highest. Yes, sir?
Um, we rank, um, tenth in per capita spending for our students?
All cities in Virginia, among all cities.
And where do we rank academically?
Uh, I've never seen an academic ranking that listed all the schools, but we certainly can try to find out some of that. The next items, these are just highlights. It reflects operating efficiencies that staff has developed and the council's endorsed when necessary in terms of policy, maintains the tax rates as mentioned. It does include the VRS and the COLA percentages I referenced earlier, so I won't repeat those. Going ahead to item thirteen, there are a number of adjustments to staffing levels. I mentioned the public safety. We added a number of employees that will be graciously receiving grant funding for at least the next two fiscal years to afford those. Secondly, in, in the general government, we, to bring us in compliance with Healthcare and Affordability Act across the board, we had to make some adjustments in part-time help. There are two adjustments in administration that we'll go over in detail during the budget discussions. Community development, I mentioned the two state mandated stormwater management plan. Community development, I mentioned the two state mandated stormwater management plan requirements and the necessary staffing to enforce that. In social service, I'm pleased to report that we're full-staffed. I think we had five positions filled during the year, and those are carried over for full funding. And those, of course, are cost shared with the state, and the state pays the lion's share, and the federal government pays the lion's share. We do meet a goal that was established for the city, and that was to separate the solid waste operations from the general fund for improved accountability and following and analyzing that fund. It's, it's set up in this budget as a separate enterprise fund. It does include the planned service consolidation initiative with Southampton County that I mentioned earlier, supports economic development initiatives in concert with FSCDI in Southampton County, and we have increased our contribution accordingly, and the county is considering likewise. It does level support, level fund, support several agencies. It reduces the debt service requirement below the planned level, which increases our flexibility in funds available for future years. Next, you'll see a chart that just gives you a pie of where does the money come from. Obviously, the, the largest section of money, I think combined, is about fifty-six percent is property taxes and other local taxes. That's the yellow and burgundy, I believe. They comprise the vast majority of our revenues. State and federal resources put up about twenty percent, and you see all the other various miscellaneous items. Debt service reserve is only four percent this year because we reduced it, so I'm pleased with that. And next, you see just the numerical breakdown of that previous pie chart that gives you all of how each of these revenue sources are budgeted and projected to change for the fiscal year that's coming forward. On number sixteen, you see where does the money go. Public safety, that's combined police, fire, emergency medical, all the other related public safety services, twenty-eight percent. The school operating debt and, operating and debt funds are, comprise another twenty-eight We have health and welfare and, excuse me, public works is another large one, is fourteen percent. Again, this is just the general fund portion, and you see the other various items where each department is represented, each area of function. On number seventeen, I won't go through it, but you see the breakdown of those various functions on the pie chart, and you'll see that noted there, the general fund spending is reducing by three-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars from the prior year as it was adopted. Next, we'll look at the enterprise funds. We hit the highlights of these funds at the last meeting, but just for clarity, I'll review the bulleted high points. In terms of the solid waste fund, this is the new fund that was created in this budget if you adopt it. This would take effect July one, and all revenues that come in from solid waste will stay in this fund and not be either supplemented or take away, taken away by other general fund needs. That's going to give us much improved accountability. In the past, the general fund has had to subsidize the solid waste fund, but now it is going to be operating as an independent fund, self-containing, and no supplemental monies based on this recommendation. You see comments about our yard waste efficiency we achieved this year. We went over that at the last meeting, so I won't belabor it. We do have a reserve appropriation again this year. This is to build funds for capital needs, for future equipment replacements. Our goal would be that before we need another solid waste fund piece of equipment, like a solid waste truck, a garbage truck, or anything of that nature, we'll be able to buy it with cash. This fund hopefully will be on a pay-as-you-go basis and not incur debt like most of the other funds are forced to do from time to time, but we believe this fund can operate without incurring debt and hopefully on a pay-as-you-go and avoid any even short-term debt for equipment uses. Lastly, I do want to mention this. Some years ago, and we'll get into this during the budget work sessions, but the council created partly, I believe, just reading between the lines, at the time, it was not a separate fund, and the city went with a recycling contract, and you set up a separate amount of the monthly bill for specifically replacing recycled containers. We'll get into the details, but our recommendation is that be rolled into this new fund and just become part of the capital reserve, and we'll go over the reasons for that recommendation during the work sessions. Next, you see the current and proposed in terms of number of customers utilized to develop the budget. I'm very pleased to report that this budget recommends a second consecutive year of reduction in residential rate for solid waste customers in the city. The residential rate would be reduced by two dollars and fifty cents per month. When you look at the cumulative effect of that over the prior two years, last year we went down a dollar seventeen, so that, that is a three dollars and sixty-seven cent reduction. If you approve this recommendation over two years, that's eight-point-four percent of the total rate, going from last year, before last year was forty-two-twenty-four, down to thirty-nine-seventy-four in the new year if you approve the recommendation. Moving ahead to water and sewer fund highlights, we will present you information related to the rate study, the independent rate study we had completed this year. There is no recommended increase in water and sewer base rates being proposed at this time. When you receive the information from the rate study, you'll see what's proposed on the horizon for dealing with the long-term capital and operating needs of the water and wastewater treatment system and sewer collection system. We will also present information on a water tank maintenance effort. This will level out our costs, and that was mentioned to you in a previous work session during the budget development phase back in the fall. In terms of the airport fund, nothing to add from the last meeting, no significant changes there. In terms of the electric fund, do want to mention the highlights here. We mentioned a couple of these the last meeting, want to give you a little bit of an update. This will reflect a reversal in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen. We've been keeping you abreast in monthly financial reports of how we've been doing in terms of the cash balance in this fund. This is the only fund area that we're currently out of compliance with the city's financial policies. The, we have successfully thus far this year reversed the trend of a downward trend and are tracking upward in a slow incremental pace, but it's projected in here that within a few years, we will achieve our goal if we keep on track. One of the prerequisites of that is passing forward to customers items such as the second bullet, whenever Dominion increases the fuel factor charge or the generation fuel adjustment, which they just did effective April one of this year. You see the impact was two dollars and forty-six cents per thousand kilowatt hours of usage. That is already in effect. We have no, no bearing on that. That's a direct pass-through. The other part of ensuring that we keep the electric fund solvent is that the council continue to pass through power rate, wholesale power rate increases when they're approved, applied to us by Dominion who supplies our wholesale power. The projection for July one, two thousand thirteen is a three-point-six percent increase. That would equal three dollars and thirty-two cents per kilowatt hours of usage cost to our customers per month. That three-point-six, I do want to emphasize, is a projection, and we, the directors informed me, Mark Blais informed me, that Dominion is expected to give a final approval of that amount of adjustment by May thirtieth. We, we're going to recommend a couple of work sessions prior to that. Hopefully by those, we will know what that's going to be, but I am encouraged, I'm not going to hopefully jinx this, but I am encouraged by comments that Mark has received preliminarily that this adjustment may actually be modified in a positive direction, meaning not as much, but that's nothing committed yet. We won't know until on or about the thirtieth what the final rate adjustment's going to be, but obviously, we're hoping for all our customers' sake that that rate percentage increase will be less than it is currently projected. Lastly, before we get to the work session schedule and the calendar, I want to just present the, some of this you saw last meeting, the school systems budget. You see their budget pie where roughly half of their funding comes from the state. The local appropriation from the city is about a third of their total funding, and you see that federal comprises about twelve percent, and the rest of it is the miscellaneous items, cafeteria, fund, and so forth.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Does this pie chart and these figures include this time adding in the ancillary cost to the city?
Yes, we, we have that figure for you, and we'll present it during the work session, but we have calculated that this year, and I was anticipating I might be asked that, but we do have that information, and it will be shared during the work sessions.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Two things. If that amount is, is that amount included as revenue?
It actually is not included as a revenue or expense. We've just accounted for it so that, but we obviously aren't going to penalize them by putting it in there and not, not equaling it out with revenue, but.
Can you explain again the one forty-two, seven fifty-eight?
Okay.
Reduction in the school funds? Is that because we're, that was our carryover from the previous year?
Yes, sir.
And we're giving, giving them?
If I could address that on the next page, I'll, I think we'll get to the detail of that, Councilman, if that's fine. I did want to point out before we leave there that, as it should be, seventy-five percent of the expenditure of the school system are for instruction and instruction-related, and you see the other percentages that by far is the bulk of it. The operations and maintenance is about eight percent, administration and health, six percent, and so forth. And just to respond, the recommended base appropriation for the, responding to Councilman Burgess's question, the recommended base appropriation for last, for the current fiscal year was four-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-seven-three-hundred-and-ninety-five in local funding. The City Council approved at the request of the school board when we were wrapping up last year's budget exercise to appropriate the carryover funds from the prior year, school year, that were available at the end of the year that the school system didn't use, and that's the one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight. If, as requested, if we re-appropriated that again this year, then that would be increasing the base by the prior year carryover. Obviously, that's a decision the City Council in consultation with the school board. You can, you can make that judgment, but I feel it's incumbent on me to point that out and recommend it without that carryover appropriation. As you notice, I am recommending, however, a full appropriation of the carryover that was left over as of June thirtieth, two thousand twelve, and that's six-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars. That's a substantial amount of money, substantial increase. Of course, it was a large carryover, much larger obviously than the prior year when it was one-hundred-and-forty-two thousand. I've given, you know, comments of, I don't want to say caution, but I've just encouraged the school system to look carefully at that and not commit themselves to all of that as a continuing appropriation because there is no guarantee, and I emphasize this, those monies are going to come out of our reserve now that they've gone into them as of June thirtieth, and they're going to be re-appropriated. So they're not recurring monies going forward. To replenish those, you'd have to pull new money out of the reserves, and we cannot sustain that, so I've just issued that word of advice that the school system needs to approach their budget priorities, which they're responsible for with that in mind, utilizing this large of a carryover amount. But we have responded to the administration, just made them aware of this recommendation. We haven't met with them yet to discuss how they're going to deal with this recommendation in terms of their budget. Does that adequately answer your question?
It does, but I guess this is summary information in our detail in our book. Do we have that broken into, the appropriation broken into our base and then the carryover amount?
Melissa, you want to comment on that? I'll defer to the Finance Director for that.
We don't need an answer now.
Yeah, during the work sessions, we'll certainly make sure that information's.
My comment would be that we need to keep up with the base and the carryover on two separate line items if it's not already done, so that we can track that going forward.
Good suggestion.
To make sure that we know what our base is and what the carryover is, so we know what we're, what we're doing from year to year.
We'll just make note of that.
Just for my clarity, are you talking about the six-hundred-plus or the one?
Well, the one forty-three was the prior year.
That's exactly where my point is.
It's the same every year.
We need to see for last year, it was one forty-two, and this year it's six forty-nine, but our base of four-eight or four-nine, something like that?
Four-eight-three-seven.
Four-eight-three-seven is the same, is steady.
And only the council, in my opinion, not administration should be recommend, not city administration should be recommending increases in the base. That's certainly an option the City Council has, but I'll present the budget, and then you can deal with it as you see fit in that going forward. I don't know if you had any information you want to share tonight, if we could, and then we'll move forward.
In, in your actual.
Come, come on up, Melissa, so the audience can hear you as well.
Good evening. In, in your actual budget document, with the school fund is discussed on page eighty-three. I think we do need to go back and separate that appropriation out as you suggested, Mr. Burgess, but also in the actual budget detail, line by line, it is separated out, so we can certainly make that adjustment in the actual.
So it is in the detail, but I think that is a very good point, so it doesn't get lost in the detail either way and either penalize or, or penalize the city or the school system. You also see on, thank you, Melissa, you also see on page twenty-six or bullet twenty-six, the state funding increase, and this is primarily to cover the state portion of the salary increase that the state legislature allotted for school personnel, two-hundred-and-forty-three-thousand in state funding, and then you'll see a federal funding, and I believe that's still a projection. I don't know that that's a final number. If I remember the superintendent's comments, that's what they've been projected to expect, but there's, you know, it's still yet to be determined if that'll be the final number. And that, their total budget then proposed from all sources, you see the total there is sixteen-point-seven-meg. That concludes my report, except with regard to the budget calendar. We've taken the calendar and just reduced it for purposes of being able to see it and also for your attention, all the stuff that occurred prior since last August is taken off, and we just showed at last meeting when I presented the preliminary numbers to you. And you see the schedule. We're at, of course, the thirteenth when you're receiving the rest of the detailed presentation. I'm recommending that we have work sessions on the twenty-second at six P.M. You see the departments, some of the departments, we would have, review their budgets that night. We tried to divide them up fairly evenly, meet again on the twenty-eighth at six P.M. And these would be hopefully six to nine P.M. kind of work sessions if that time works for the council. Then on May thirtieth, we'd wrap up the departmental reviews and agency reviews, and then we would notify the newspaper and advertise for the public hearing by the thirty-first. The public hearing would be set for the tenth of June at seven P.M. Prior to that, do have set up for six o'clock to, as necessary, to have additional work session time among the council after you've reviewed it all. We have set aside another work session date if you need it to call a meeting for June seventeenth at six P.M. That would only be as necessary. And then you, as you traditionally do, consulted with the mayor. It's been the practice of the council to adopt the budget on a regular meeting, and that would come on the twenty-fourth of June at, during the regular seven o'clock meeting. And you could, of course, have any additional work sessions that you need anywhere in between. But just so everybody worked their calendar, I wanted to present this, and hopefully this, this will give you a good working document. And Mayor, I would ask that the council endorse this schedule if, if you desire to do so.
The manager has submitted a calendar for our budget work sessions. I need a motion, please, to accept that. A second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second to adopt the recommended budget calendar presented. Are there any questions? Are there any questions? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposeds have the same right.
Aye.
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 And aye. Budget calendar so adopted, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Mr. Manager, two questions.
Yes, sir.
Real quick. One is the raises that the school board, the school system's getting, is it comparable to what we're giving our employees?
Their proposed budget from the school board is 3 percent, and the difference would be ours is 3, but one of ours is the VRS, and the school board had already done the entire 5 percent. So theirs at this point, as presented by the school board, as I understand it, would have a one additional percent increase included in their proposed budget, but that was before this recommendation of 142,000 less.
All right. And the other one, I'm not being embarrassed, but it's minor. On five, slide five, you've got 1 percent increase of general fund is approximately $65,000.
That was what we presented on the 22nd as an estimate, but it actually worked out to be 120.
Okay, so it's 60,000, not 65. Okay.
She had projected it at the earlier meeting. I say she, I'm not going to put blame on Melissa, but she had not done an exact calculation. That was just a projection.
Okay, it just wasn't enough for me.
But the 60 is more accurate of 1 percent. If there are no other questions for tonight, Mayor and council members, I would like to say that it's been a distinct pleasure mine to continue in service to the city, and despite the always challenge of putting together a budget in the late hours and all the work, it's gratifying to continue to work here and to be entrusted with the immense responsibility of presenting the budget that's so critical to the operations of this city. So thank you.
Thank you, and the manager has put in a lot of late nights combining this budget, trying to handle the extra duties that he was asked to perform as well as his regular duties.
And thanks to the finance director.
And her too. And others there.
Yeah, it's all of them. It's everybody.
And now, if there are no more questions for the manager, and we have an adopted calendar, we will talk about budget at that time. It's time for council staff reports on boards and commissions. Anyone?
Well, we had the regional jail. Everything there is going smooth. We have said that we're not going to have an increase this year. One thing which some people may have seen in the Suffolk paper, didn't hit ours yet, was that one of our own there, an education program director, Mr. Ronnie Sharp, won Citizen of the Employee of the Year Award from the 15th Annual Virginia Association of Regional Jails Conference, and that's a big, big honor, and he went against a lot of people in bigger cities. And pithies to him, I mean, he really did a great job, and he's got a good program up there for the education system.
Anyone else?
A couple of weeks ago, time flies, it's been a rough couple of weeks, but a couple of weeks ago, we, I think we were all there and participated in the announcement of our newest business to come to Franklin Love's Truck Stop. We're looking forward to having them, and we're glad to be able to be a participant with them. Looks like it's going to be the start of a great partnership, and I congratulate FSCDI and Amanda Jarrett, the executive director, on pulling that together after the mayor made the introductions and did her part and stepped aside and let them do their work, and they did a great job. I think it's 50 jobs is what they're projecting, and...
Seven million.
Seven million dollar investment, and that's the, you know, there's probably maybe some more to come after that, maybe, so they've already started working with us on some things, and I think it's going to be a great partnership, really looking forward to it, hoping this is the first of many more to come in the not-too-near-distant future.
And keep in mind that the developer, Mr. Jansen, is still, he still has an allotment of property to market, so we're looking forward to more businesses coming to the area. Are there any other comments?
Madam Mayor, if I could, wanted to update the council on the SIPSA meeting that I attended in April, and advised the council that the SIPSA board adopted a budget for the fiscal year 2013, 2014. The good news is that there's no increase in the tipping fee. I would also point out that we are beginning to see some resolutions being passed. Virginia Beach has passed a resolution, and the City of Suffolk has passed a resolution as we prepare for SIPSA post-2018. Probably in June, I will be bringing to you a proposed motion for consideration for adoption regarding how we feel about participating in SIPSA post-2018.
Question. Is the Trash Committee, the regional, still meeting and participating?
We still meet. We've been holding off a little bit because of a lot of the CAO meetings and the SIPSA meetings where they're trying to pound out a lot of little loose-end details so we know exactly where we stand before we go to our final push as to how we're going to work together on this.
Good job.
But it is our desire that the three communities will hopefully, the three western tidewor communities will hopefully reach the same conclusion...
Right.
... in terms of a recommendation to the boards.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Could I say one other thing? One of the things that I failed to admit, reminded me of the trash, I failed to mention when we had the groundbreaking for Love's was that overwhelmingly, the topic that was talked about the most, other than the fact that they were coming, was the partnership that the localities are beginning to seriously work together. It was noted by our state representatives and our federal representatives and greatly welcomed, and they were glad to see it, and I think it's going to pay dividends for us economically from an economic development standpoint and from our budgetary standpoint for all localities to be working together to try to figure out how we can do things better as a unit rather than each individual group. So I just wanted to point that out, that it was, it was really profound how much they talked about that, about the ability of us to work together. And I applaud the new mayor and vice mayor and all of us, the council, for making sure that happens.
It has been rewarding, and I think we are headed in a good direction now with the city collaborating with the counties. I'm going to include other counties because we are reaching out, but we just haven't gotten to the level we are with Southampton, but we are reaching out to other counties.
And if you noticed, there were as many Southampton folks there for the groundbreaking.
There are some folders at your seat. Would you please review? It is the evaluation for the city attorney, and be prepared to evaluate him next meeting, So I think any other boards and commissions that we would do in closed session can wait. Do we have anything else that needs to be done in closed session?
With regard to the evaluations, I...
Boards and commissions.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you had something for the evaluations?
The managers is included in that as well, so the second installment under my contractual obligation.
And Mrs. Joyner and I are talking about the manager, yeah. But there is no need to go into closed session as we don't have anything that is really hot for boards and commissions...
Wow.
... in closed session. So with that being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Don't everyone speak at one time?
Second.
Don't everyone second at one time?
Aye.
It's been moved improperly, second to adjourn. Any question? If not, may I have a positive response from everyone?
Aye.
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 And aye. Good evening, and thank you for coming.